Run the screen. Roll. We're gonna give it one minute to get started. John. All right, I'd like to call to order the Franklin Regional School District's Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2024. Ms. Wolf, roll call.
Here, I couldn't hear you.
Mr. Pallett?
Here.
Mr. Zebrock is absent. Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Dr. Eschelman-Ramie?
Here.
Mrs. Wollin?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Krymski?
Here.
Mr. Kuzloski is also absent.
We have seven.
We were in executive session from 6:30 to 7:30 for legal contractual and personal obligations. Now we will turn the floor over to Dr. Prine for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually excited to have with us Ms. Casey Pope, who's at Franklin Regional High School Assistant Principal, who tonight is going to talk about our students who receive their AP Capstone diplomas, which are some of our current seniors, as well as a couple of graduates from last year, as well as our 2025 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So...
Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. We did invite our winners, but it is a very, very busy time right now with everything going on, so we did want to recognize them and read their names and acknowledge their accomplishments because they are really something special. So I want to give you a little bit of information about the AP Capstone diploma before I acknowledge the recipients. So students typically take AP seminar in grade 10 or 11, and that's followed by AP research. Each course is a year-long course, and AP seminar is a prerequisite for the AP research course. In both of those courses, students investigate a variety of topics in multiple disciplines, and students can choose to explore topics related to other AP courses that they're taking. Both courses guide students through completing a research project, writing an academic paper, and making a presentation on that project. And over the course of the two-year program, they are required to analyze topics through multiple lenses to construct meaning or gain understanding, plan and conduct a study or an investigation, propose solutions to real-world problems, plan and produce communication in various forms, collaborate to solve a problem, integrate, synthesize, and make cross-curricular connections. And among other things, with the AP research, they do a very, very long, lengthy college-style research project where then they present on that topic, and we have staff members that go in order to be a panel and question the students when they're done with it. So they get a really good experience with what this would look like just outside of high school as well. For the assessment, the AP scores for both courses are based on teacher assessment of the student presentation and the components from the College Board, as well as their written components, and the end of the course exam. They...the students who earn scores of three or higher in AP seminar and AP research, and on four additional AP exams of their choosing, receive the AP Capstone diploma. Students who earn scores of three or higher in AP seminar and AP research, but not on four additional AP exams, can receive the AP Seminar and Research certificate for being successful in those courses. So our AP Capstone diploma, the current seniors that we have now are Riley Blatts, Nia Malek, Gia Prasad, Ishal Rahim, Tuen Rebecca Tian, Timothy Wagner, and Lucy Zhang. And then our graduates were Addison Lacy, Juliana Landsberg, and Madeline Meyer. And our other group of students who have done a phenomenal job with a different scholarship opportunity are the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So this program is an annual academic competition among high school students for recognition and college undergraduate scholarships, and this began in 1955. The program is conducted by National Merit Scholarship Corporation. It's a not-for-profit organization that operates without the government assistance, and the United States high school students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the preliminary SAT or PSAT, or the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test, and that serves as an initial screen of over 1.3 million entrants each year, and by meeting the published program entry and participation requirements. So more than 16,000 of the high scores representing less than 1% of the nation's high school graduating seniors will qualify as semifinalists. The National Merit Scholarship then arranges the selection index scores of all National Merit Program participants within a state in descending order. As a result of the process, semifinalist qualifying scores vary greatly from state to state and from year to year, but the scores of all the semifinalists are extraordinarily high. We have four semifinalists in our high school this year. That would be Anna Pariton, Gia Prasad, Nathan Snyder, and Lucy Zhang. We will, of course, award them certificates and see them again tomorrow, but thank you again for your time and letting us to congratulate all of those students.
Thanks for sharing that.
And just to conclude my report, I want to take an opportunity. We had a very successful fall sports season, so a lot of our athletes are...continue to compete in the playoffs in girls soccer, boys soccer, golf, tennis went...did great. And I'm trying to think of who else. Cross-country runs on Thursday. So many great things happening with our kids and for our kids, and so I want to thank our community for the strong support throughout the year for those athletic teams. I also wanted to take a moment as well to invite, encourage everyone to, if you get a chance, get over to see the Weston Games, which is our theater...our theater production for the fall. Those kids work exceptionally hard to make great things happen and a great show. So that's Thursday evening, that's Saturday evening, and it's a Sunday matinee at 2:00. And I want to say the show's at 7:00. It's my calendar, and so I look forward to seeing a lot of you there and people at home. It's a great opportunity to see the many talents that our kids bring to the table. So that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Prine. Donna, do you have any public comments? All right, so we do not have any public comments for this evening. We will move on into any solicitors' comments.
None for public session.
All right, thank you. We will start with the Consent and Item 1. Dr. Boginsky.
Good evening. Our first item is the request for approval of Panorama Education climate surveys, and as noted in the previous board meeting, year-one implementation would include surveys out to staff, as well as parents and guardians, with preparation for year two, and a request for May 2025 approval of the student survey with all of its details.
Any questions for Dr. Boginsky? Would you be able to...I know that there...you had done some online...well, first of all, we had an online meeting for the public within that 30-day review, but also they came back with some of the questions that might be asked, just so that we have an understanding, a little bit of what might be asked upon the teachers within that, as well as the parents, so that the community also has a little bit of an understanding of kind of the avenue we're approaching with that, and what might that entail?
So in the attachments are a Q&amp;A that came from our Zoom demonstration, and the...some of the questions that came up were around how the climate surveys would be used. So for parents and guardians, the survey...all surveys would be anonymous and voluntary. The surveys would go out to parents in the district, guardians...parents and guardians, and would include questions that are examples of issues that we see that might be obstacles to family engagement. So parents are asked how connected they feel. I'm paraphrasing some of these questions. There's lots of good, detailed questions, but how connected they feel, how often they communicate with teachers, what are the obstacles they feel exist currently for them in terms of engaging with their students, teachers, and generally would give us a sense of how to improve our family engagement. In the staff survey, which would also be anonymous and voluntary, and we did review that with our union leadership, our teacher union leadership, and they were comfortable with those questions, things around how they feel professional development works for them, how supported they feel in terms of their ability to improve their instruction. It gives you kind of aggregated data across maybe a building or a grade level to help us improve how we're supporting our teachers. Some of the other questions were related to length and cost of contract, so that cost is listed there. The length of a contract would be three years, with the first year being $18,000, almost $19,000 due to a training cost, and then $16,000, around $16,000 the next two years. And again, that cost would be covered by the PCC paying for... And I think some of the...you know, the other questions came around what this would look like for students, and that's why we felt it was important to develop those questions separately and then bring those back to you in detail in that May meeting for a June approval for use in the fall.
Any additional questions for Dr. Boginsky?
When would we get a decision on the grant? What's the timeframe on that? Do we know roughly?
Not sure. It varies, yeah. We have applied. Right, it's not competitive, so we don't...we wouldn't get denied. It's a question of how we would use that money, so that's why we chose to use.
Okay, thank you. Right, so there are different levels, and right now PCCD has only released the non-competitive or guaranteed grant, and that has...there are tiers of options for how that's used. And so there's a basic level, and then each...you know, there are like three tiers. Each one gets more complex. And so essentially, it's prescribed in terms of the areas in which you can use it, and so one of them being things around climate surveys. Where the climate survey could benefit is as we look for future grant funding and the selection of future programming and designing future programming. That helps us see perception, and that goes toward...there's a competitive piece usually with PCCD that you're competing for dollars. So there's one level that's guaranteed, and the next one, which is a competitive model, which we have yet to get, and so... So using Panorama gives us important information about our programming decisions, but it also gives us important information to use when applying for more competitive grants. Okay, this might be a crazy question, but why is it under the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency? I can answer that. And so, but safe schools used to be...so there used to be an Office of Safe Schools, which was in the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and then when, in response to school violence, they created an arm of funding that came through the Pennsylvania Commission for Crimes and Delinquency. So they had two different churches, so to speak, and two different offices. They didn't always communicate together well, so we were working with PCCD, which typically works with grants involving community grants and law enforcement grants. And then the Office of Safe Schools only dealt with funding around schools. So when they...when the legislature split that pot years ago, it was sort of lumpy. And so now what they did, they moved it all under one umbrella, which is the PCCD. So this isn't...are you saying it's not connected to crime and delinquency, even though it's funded by... It puts it all...it takes all of that and lumps it into one area. Mental health is there, grants around the environment...school environment, like so like lead-in schools and asbestos and all of those types of things could fall under that. It could be school safety and security measures, mental health. PCCD grant. And so even though it's crimes and delinquency, it has a broad function in terms of that governmental office.
And so this specific grant that we've applied for, it's not just for this survey. It encompasses other options? What are the other options? The other...the rest of the grant we use to pay for the University of Pittsburgh Social Services Liaisons. So this is an additional...this is additional funding to whatever we already have? So whatever they tell us they're offering to us, we put...we put the $16,000 to $18,000 in there as well. So the University of Pittsburgh Social Services Liaisons is almost entirely covered by that. We make up the difference with other funding. Right, so if we didn't...for this particular program, what would you use it for? We'd have to make...we'd have to go back to the drawing board and make other decisions. The reason we're choosing to look at climate surveys is because, as Dr. P mentioned, there are tiers of recommendations that we have the ability to check off in terms of things we have in the district. To move out of tier one, we...this is our last piece to complete so that we could move into that more competitive level of grant funding. So that's why we chose to use...to look at climate surveys.
So these surveys would help understand how parents view the programs we offer at Franklin or different services we offer at Franklin, whether they're important to them or not important to them.
Right, and the idea is to use them over time so that we can rate whether we are improving in those areas as we go.
And then the teachers also can take the survey, and we can see their view on the programs we're offering.
Yes.
The responses are...I think we've talked about this in the past. They're anonymous.
Yes.
So nobody's putting in their name, address, phone number.
No, and using Panorama Education allows you to keep it completely anonymous, whereas if we created our own Google form, it wouldn't be research-based, and it would have to collect emails and things like that. So the other piece of using Panorama allows us to work with them to create action plans based on that data, and they have a large sampling of other data that they compare it against nationally to help us make quicker decisions about what to do with the data.
And then I go out to their website and talks about, does Panorama engage in data mining, what we do not do. I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff here for privacy policy.
Correct, yes.
What I do on a daily basis is look at that type of stuff. Does Panorama share student data? I know we're not doing the student part yet, just to be clear, but does Panorama share student data with third parties? No, absolutely not. Who determines what questions are on a Panorama survey? Each school district that uses Panorama's products to run surveys decides what topics and questions to use based on what's right for that school district's community. Is that accurate, or is that marketing speak?
No, that's accurate. We have access to all of the questions that I sent to all of you as well that were available for 30-day review. There are a large number of those questions available to us, so you would never really give a survey that long to anyone, so you may choose at a certain...for a certain school year to say, you know, this is the area...these are the two areas we want to focus on. We give that survey repeatedly to see what the data is doing in terms of change, but that's the database they provide of questions. You have now received those. We can choose from those.
Then I saw that they use the NIS cybersecurity framework to protect the data, which is something that we use at Pitt, and that's a cybersecurity framework for the federal government. So it sounds like they try to protect the data.
Yes, absolutely.
100% you'll protect the data, but they try.
And who exactly determines the questions?
So the questions that were provided that I emailed out to all of you that were also on display for 30 days, those are the questions that we would choose from. So we could use any of those, but you wouldn't use all of them at once.
But who decides the exact questions?
They develop them. They're research-based questions that are developed by researchers in the field, the survey field. So they're developed in a way that helps draw out the right information, so depending on...you know, these are people who...this is their job. So they build research questions that help get you to the answers that you're looking for, because if you misword a question, you're going to get skewed data. So that's why we thought that Panorama seemed to be the best in the business in terms of their ability to build those question databases in a way that's research-based.
You said we don't have to use all of them, so who's going to make the final decision?
We can't...we probably will use all of the ones that are on that list, just not all at once. Right, so if you receive a survey with 50 questions, I know I wouldn't answer them all, but if you receive a 10-question survey on two topics, you'd be more likely to answer them. And so they help us work through that because there are goals you want to hit with survey completion in terms of the percentage of the population that fulfills it.
But we're not asking any question that we haven't already agreed to?
Correct.
Or haven't been seen, right? So you're not picking from a number of lists?
They don't exist.
They don't exist.
You've seen them all, right?
Any additional questions? All right, we'll move to number two, the social-emotional learning with SPOTS.
Yes, we are seeking approval for the SPOTS social-emotional learning curriculum for use at the K-5 level to include students in special education and small intervention groups, potentially of students in regular education in a tiered intervention group.
Any questions on SPOTS? All right, the camp invention facility use for summer?
This is an annual request for the waiving of the facility use fees at Franklin Regional Intermediate School to support Camp Invention. That is directed by Dr. Brian May, one of our fifth-grade teachers, and we are...each year we are a host site for Camp Invention, which is a national program. So this is just the request to waive the fee for the facility.
Any questions on the camp? All right, thank you. Dr. Delp, A Raisin in the Sun.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're seeking a motion to approve a Raisin in the Sun by Lorraine Hansberry. This is a resource, a fictional resource, used for our 10th-grade academic English course.
Any questions for Dr. Delp?
I did read the book, and I think it's a pretty good story. There is a little bit of language in there that maybe some people wouldn't like. I don't think it's enough to do anything about, but there is some...a little bit of profanity in there. My only question is how would a teacher use the information in that? Because, okay, it was set in the 50s, and it was the way the black person was treated in the 50s, and there's a lot of things that you could talk about, but I think you have to watch that you're not teaching one mindset, or, you know, like racism, or, you know, you'd have to be careful that you're talking about something that happened in history in the 50s that's not happening now. So I think how it's handled...I think it's a great book. I think how it's handled is kind of important. If there's any way that you can set any kind of rules to how it's implemented in the classroom, I think that might be something to think about.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Delp. Dr. Rogowski, the WPSD independent contractor agreement?
Good evening. This is an annual contract that we have with Western Pennsylvania School for the Deaf to provide services to students that attend the Western Pennsylvania School for Blind Children. So students who are a Franklin Regional that attend the school for the blind that need deaf or hard-of-hearing services, the school for the deaf will provide those. It's a small amount of money, under $1,000 each year, but it's something that we budget for.
Any questions for Dr. Rogowski?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, the new touchpads and modules for swimming?
Good evening. Item six is new touchpads and modules for swimming. It's an agreement with Institutional Specialties to just replace some of the equipment with the timing system at the pool for the swim team. We'll be replacing six touchpads and two modules.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
How long do those last? Like, what is the lifespan for that?
It just varies depending on usage, things of that nature, and how they're kept, right? And then the PM done on them, if they're treated the right way. I mean, they could last for anywhere from five to 10 years, right? Just depending on the system, just in how you care for them.
Do we know all of the current ones?
I don't know how old the current ones are.
Well, I just remember voting on them before. Do you remember that, Scott?
No problem.
Next, the fire alarm system.
Yeah, this is an agreement with Fedora Intertek to perform the PM and inspections on our fire alarm system throughout the whole district. They'll be inspecting the fire panels, the alarm system, sensors, things of that nature, and as well as while they're in there doing that, if there's any preventive maintenance that needs done on those, they will go ahead and take care of that while they're there.
Any questions on the fire alarm system? All right, the remaining sewage lines repair?
Yeah, this will be in agreement with Snyder Environmental to come in and repair the remaining lines that weren't repaired in the previous project. These will be the lines coming from the science wing of the building to behind the stadium there. Those were not repaired in the previous project, so this will take care of that.
Any questions on the sewage lines? High school roof repairs?
Yes, in agreement with TMR Roofing to repair the areas of the roof in question. We will need these repairs to get through winter. If you looked at the report, the condition of that roof is in some pretty risky conditions, so we'll try to get through the winter with what we got, and then maybe look into doing something permanent after this.
Any questions on the roof repairs? All right, and the boilers and chillers?
Yes, this is a one-year agreement with Huckenstein Mechanical to perform preventive maintenance on the district's boilers and chillers. We did have an agreement that was just for boilers before, but that agreement's up, so we went out looking for new vendors to come in and perform this. We have never had a preventive maintenance agreement on the chillers in the district, so this is something new, and it will take care of all our boilers and our chillers. And it has an option to renew for two years. It's not an automatic renewal. We have the option to renew it over the next two years.
Any questions on the boilers and chillers? All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Perry, the homestead farmstead applications mailing.
Good evening. This first item is the annual letter of understanding with the Westmoreland County Tax Assessment Office to handle the required homestead farmstead annual mailing. This mailing goes to all the properties that aren't currently designated as homestead farmstead to make sure they're aware of that option. And the total cost is approximately $2,500.
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
The next item, the administration's seeking the board's authorization to increase the... to increase the amount of investments that the, the board would authorize in fixed-term investments to 15 million. A couple of months ago, the board had authorized up to 10 million dollars. We did secure fixed-term investments totaling 9.8 million dollars. Some of those are going to start maturing already in December. So we would like to have a little bit of flexibility here. Obviously, the Federal Reserve started reducing interest rates at their September meeting. We expect that to continue in November and December, maybe not as quickly as previously thought. But this will just allow for flexibility to take advantage of rates as they become available.
Any questions for Mr. Perry?
This month for gifts, grants, and donations, forty-five hundred dollars to the athletic department from D Six Packs and Dogs. Twenty thousand dollars for a tugboat grant from the Grabell Foundation that would be used towards an outdoor classroom at the high school. And three thousand dollars from the mentoring partnership of Southwestern Pennsylvania for family engagement activities.
Any questions on gifts, grants, and donations? Budget transfers?
This month, we have budget transfers totaling 55,902.15 for the general fund.
Any questions on budget transfers?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Dr. Delp, PA Student/Teacher Support Program?
Yes, this is a participation agreement for a grant program through FIA that would, we would simply be a pass-through organization where money from that grant is passed through our, our organization to the student teachers that would be serving with us during the first semester. They have indicated that if grant monies remain available, that second semester could also be awarded grants.
Any questions for Dr. Delp? All right, the PA Mental Health Education Learning Program?
This is very similar. This is for specifically practitioners that are dealing in mental health areas. For example, an intern in school psychology would fall into this category. Again, we would just be a pass-through organization of funding.
Any questions on PA Helps? All right, policy review first read?
The policies that are up for seeking approval for a first read are policy 247 hazing and policy 234 pregnant, parenting, married students.
Any questions on policy first reads? Policy review second reads?
Yes, we are seeking approval for second read for policies 252 dating violence, policy 317.1 educator misconduct, policy 336 personal necessity leave, policy 807 opening exercises, moment of silence, flag displays, and policy 824 maintaining professional adult-student boundaries.
Any questions on policy review second reads? And personal agenda?
Yes, we are seeking approval of the attached personnel items to be provisionally approved upon submission of appropriate documentation, including clearances and all required documents as prescribed by law.
Any questions on personnel agenda for Dr. Delp? Thank you, Dr. Delp. That concludes the consent agenda items for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. John, second, Vince? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will move right into the regular meeting. So I will call to order the Franklin Regional Board of School Directors' regular meeting for Monday, October 21st, 2024. We will now stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Roll call, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Fallett?
Present.
Mrs. Buchera?
Here.
Mrs. Weline?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
Mr. Zebak and Mr. Kozlowski are...
So I need a approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes for September 16th, 2024, as well as our regular meeting minutes for September 16th, 2024. John?
I'll second.
Second. Deb? All, any objections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's seven zero. I will now turn it over to Dr. Pirino for future dates.
Good evening. Future dates include November 6th, a curriculum committee meeting at 6:00 PM at the administrative offices. November 13th, a, is our finance committee meeting at 6:00 PM at the administrative offices. November 18th, committee of the whole meeting and regular board meeting, 7:30 here at the Mersham Municipal Building. And some future topics include annual agreements, gifts, grants, and donations, policy review, and personnel. And that, that concludes the upcoming topics and future dates.
Thank you, Dr. Pirino. I also now need approval of the financial reports. So I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for September 2024.
So move.
Scott? Vince? Hearing, any objections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. And now I'll read the list of bills. We had a general fund of, general fund of 3,564,567.24. Athletic fund of 8,842.97 for a total paid bills of 3,573,410.21. Unpaid bills, general fund, 2,38,157.81. Capital reserve fund of 450,639.4. Athletic fund of 76,115.67 for a total unpaid bills of 2,564,912.52. Grand total, 6,138,322.73. Food services of 108,762.72. Grand total, including food services, of 6,247,085.45. I need a motion for the approval of the list of bills for October 2024. John, second. Vince? Any objections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. We do not have any public comments. Solicitor comments?
None for public session.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for any items anybody would like to have removed from the consent agenda items for separate motion by the members of the board.
I would like to remove item number one for a roll call vote.
Item number one. Any others?
Number 19.
Number 19. Any others besides number one and number 19? Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items two through 18. Deb, second. Vince? Any objections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie, seven zero. Deb, I'll open the floor. You wanted to remove, you just want a roll call vote?
I just want a roll call vote.
Okay. We just moved to...
We just need a motion in a second.
We need a second?
Second.
Second, John? All right, we will move to a roll call vote on the Panorama Education Climate Survey. Ms. Wolf?
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Fallett?
No.
Mrs. Buchera?
No.
Mrs. Weline?
No.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
No.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Motion fails, four three. We will move on to personal agenda, number 19. You just want a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Okay. We need a second?
I'll second.
Second, Deb. Ms. Wolf, a roll call for personnel agenda.
Mr. Azalina?
I'm staying.
Mr. Fallett?
Yes.
Mrs. Buchera?
Yes.
Mrs. Weline?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. That is all the consent agenda items for this evening. I need a motion to adjourn the regular, regular voting meeting.
Let me...
Deb, second. John? Have a good evening, everyone.
That was quick and easy.